Welcome to the January 12th, 2023 City Council in-Depth Meeting. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freyly?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne? Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gingerich?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the item, just want to say a happy birthday, Nick Gao. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to get right into council discussion items. So the first item is Iowa Business and Childcare Presentation by Iowa Women's Foundation. We have Dawn, Sheri, and Deanne online. Welcome.
Uh oh, they have to unmute themselves.
I think you guys are muted, maybe? Well, no, Sheri's not. Can you hear us? Okay.
Yeah, we got a thumbs up.
Can't hear her.
Sorry, we just can't hear you. We're going to look into it. Apologize.
I know I broke a couple of them.
Should I get Jeremy?
Yeah, or Kevin, probably.
Can we shift and do somebody else's first?
Oh, hey.
There we go.
You gotta turn the volume up.
I thought you could hear us.
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Everybody else needs to mute.
Can, can everybody else? All right, Councilmember Osborne, thank you. Can everybody mute other than, it looks like Sheri and Deanne? All right, welcome.
Thank you. I am going to ask for permission to share my screen, and we will go through our slides. Are you able to see the screen there in room?
Yes, we're about to bring it up right now.
Who's talking?
Oh, perfect.
Um, sure he is.
Hi, I see you, Sheri.
Oh, good. And Dawn Oliver just joined us as well from the Women's Foundation. Dawn, they are currently getting us pulled up on a large screen in the room, and they just were able to get the sound figured out, just so you're aware. We have not started anything yet.
Oh, then I'm feeling a little bit better. Okay, so you need a camera on. Okay, there we are. Okay. Do we need our PowerPoint?
Now let me share the screen.
Did for a second.
Do you have to make her presenter?
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Sorry.
You gotta love technology. It's wonderful when it works, and it can be a real pain when it doesn't. As you're getting it set up, I do want to thank you for letting us present to you virtually. I work actually in North Iowa. I'm up in Mitchell County, so almost the Minnesota border. So Muscatine is quite a haul for me. Not that you all are not worth the trip, because you very much are. So Dawn just fit this time. They are trying to get everything pulled up and then switching the presenter to us so that we can present and share.
I pulled up the PowerPoint, so I've got the PowerPoint.
Perfect, so, perfect. So if you would like to have Dawn be the presenter, either one, that's perfect. And just let us know when you're ready, and we will go ahead and get started. I know you're all anxious to kind of get going and keep your moving, your meeting moving forward.
And you mentioned Dawn, not Deanne, correct?
Correct. It is Dawn. Yep. So while you are working on that, just in the spirit of your time, just to let you know, Deanne is actually our brand-new president and CEO. She is joining us tonight just to kind of watch and see one of these presentations that we give all across the state. And Dawn is our past president and CEO, and she has done a lot of work in Muscatine. I'm sure some of you are familiar with her. So I'm going to have Dawn kind of take the lead in presenting, because I know she's very familiar with your community. And then my name is Sheri Penny, and I also work for the Women's Foundation. My primary role is really honing in on the business community and helping them understand childcare and how it impacts their workforce attraction, retention, also helping them come up with public-private partnerships. Dawn, it looks like you're the presenter now.
Maybe.
It's getting closer.
Okay, but I have never done this, folks, go-to-meeting, so you're going to have to help me figure out. Oh, you don't really want to see my dad. There's my dad in all the... Grand kiddos. What happened to my screen? Okay, I'm going to unshare for a minute. Okay, buddy. Open up my PowerPoint. Okay, my PowerPoint is open. So, does anybody now, if I've got the PowerPoint open, does it, do I just hit Share Screen?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, but see, oh, I go like, do I need to maybe go to? There we go. How is that?
You are sharing currently?
Yeah, we can add.
You are not sharing.
Okay, because it's taken up my full screen, so I don't know.
Sheri, are you, are you able to present?
We're getting closer.
Sheri, if you can pull up the screen, I, if you can pull up the screen, I'd be happy to just do the presentation.
We can actually, see, if you just want to maximize the PowerPoint now, we can see the, we can see your screen.
Yeah, so maximize.
Just start from beginning, and it should, go ahead and pull it up. There you go. You're good.
Okay, so, all right, so thank you for your patience, everyone. As Sheri indicated, I am Dawn Oliver Lyon, the previous president and CEO of the Iowa Women's Foundation. And we're excited to be here today to just kind of talk about childcare and how businesses and communities can be a part of this effort. I do want to take just a few minutes to share with you some information about the Women's Foundation to kind of give some context to how we got to where we are and why we are all across the state now doing presentations just like this. So we are one of 140 women's funds all around the globe working to improve the lives of women and girls in our communities. We work really hard to help women and girls become economically self-sufficient. We break down those barriers that are keeping women from being successful, because we believe when women are successful, their families are, and ultimately their communities are much better off. After a year of hands-on community research and conversation, we identified the six major barriers to economic success for Iowa's women and girls. And as you can see from the math that I'm sharing with you now, these are the 18 communities that we traveled to all across the state, convening to the table stakeholders and asking, you know, why? Why are women and girls struggling, and what are those barriers? From those conversations, we identified employment, childcare, housing, transportation, education, training, and mentors. And then, once we knew that, we went back to those 18 communities. We presented the data, and we asked them now, in a perfect world, if you can start working on one, which do you want to work on? And childcare was identified as the primary barrier. To be honest with you, we were surprised. We really thought it would be education and training or employment. But when you think about it, if you don't have childcare, you can't go to work. You can't get the education and training you need. You can't take advantage of apprenticeships. It all comes back to not having childcare. So the thing that's important to us about this is to say that this isn't something that the Women's Foundation just woke up one day and decided we were going to address childcare. It was identified as one of the primary barriers to economic self-sufficiency. So let me just share with you quickly the data at the statewide level. And that, because what we do best is, once we learned that childcare was the primary barrier, we went and looked at the data. And I kind of always like to share the pre-COVID data to the now data. I'm going to share with you state, and then I'm going to take it even lower and go into your community and share with you. So first of all, in the state of Iowa, Iowa is number one, or tied for number one, with the most households with children under the age of six having all parents working outside of the home, 75%. The national average is 62.3, so you can see we are quite ahead of the national average. We have a lot of working parents with young children. Right now, there are over 519,000 children ages zero to 12. You can see that has gone down a little bit since 2018, when we started our work. And we do reference children zero to 12, because we believe the after-school program is essential and should be a part of childcare when talking about the availability of it. There are 173,000 spots across our state. That has gone up from 169,000, but we still have a shortfall of over 346,000 spots. Even if not all of those 519,000 children need childcare, we still have a huge childcare issue in our state and a shortfall. We have three point children needing childcare for every one slot available. Iowa has lost 28% of its childcare businesses over the past five years and 56% of our businesses over the last 10 years. Let's go down a little bit deeper, and let's look at Muscatine County data, which I'm sure you're very into, you're probably a little more interested in. So pretty, please note that now, and you are at 82% of your households with children under the age of six. So quite honestly, you went from 78 prior to COVID to 82. You have an awful lot of working parents within your community with little kiddos. And that's way above the national average and even above the state average. Your number of children zero to 12 has gone down in Muscatine to 7,355. And as you can see, the number of childcare spaces available has probably stayed pretty stagnant at just over 1,700. So you have a shortfall of 5,651 spaces. That is lower than before, but the big difference is you now have fewer children zero to 12, and that's why you're seeing the decrease in your shortfall. You have 3.3 children for every one slot available. And in Muscatine County, you have lost 30% of your childcare businesses in the last five years and 74% in the last 10 years. To be honest with you, that's one of the highest loss rates I've seen across our state. Another data that we try to look at is childcare assistance. Childcare assistance is the assistance available to low-income parents making 145% of the federal poverty line. This is a way to help them be able to afford childcare and still work. We've seen 23% now not accepting it in the last five years, and again, 74% have stopped accepting it in the last 10 years. So you can see the data tells us there really is a shortfall in Muscatine. We also like to take just a minute to share this specific data with you. So Iowa is currently one of the most expensive states which to raise a child, and a lot of that is because of childcare. In Iowa, a family earning the median household income with both parents working spends 11.9% of their household income on childcare. And a single parent spends 40.7%. 7% is considered the affordability rate. So you can see that both our single-parent households and our dual-parent households are paying over the, what is considered the affordability rate. And in Muscatine County, the cost of childcare for an infant has gone up 8% in a home and 17% in a licensed center over the last couple of years. And the care for a child has not gone up in a childcare development home, but has gone up 1% in a center. And I think you'll find if you talk to most centers, the infant and care is where there is a shortfall. That is where most places have a waiting list and, you know, supply and demand. It's going up because it's just not as available as it was. The other thing that I think it's really important to share with you, you'll also hear from people, "Well, we have a childcare center, and we have some spaces." And we have spaces because we can't, we can't find a workforce, and we can't find a workforce, we can't serve the kids. Well, we took a look at the childcare workforce wages. In Iowa, a childcare provider makes an average of $10.73 an hour. This is the third lowest-paid profession in our state, only above locker room attendants and lifeguards. We pay people in this state more to take care of our hamburgers than we do to take care of our children. To the Women's Foundation, this is unacceptable. And that's another reason why we're working really hard to do, to increase the availability of quality and affordable childcare. Iowa trails nationwide rates for childcare providers. The average is 13.31, and we're at $10.73. So we know that low wages and a lack of benefits are barriers to attracting and retaining staff to work in the childcare field. The last little bit of that I'd like to share with you before we talk about how communities and businesses can take a lead and increase the availability of childcare in their communities, let's look at some data for businesses. And this data was provided back in February of 20, right before COVID hits. We were really just getting out there to promote it, and then, of course, everything got derailed. So now we talk about it whenever we possibly can. Again, this data came from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and it really talks about how childcare impacts Iowa's state economy. So first of all, we lose $935 million a year to our economy because of childcare. Almost a billion dollars is lost. We also lose $153 million annually in tax revenue due to childcare issues and absences, and employee turnover is costs Iowa employers an estimated $781 million a year. Why? Why are we seeing these kind of data, this kind of data? That's a lot of money that we are losing to our state economy, and our businesses are losing to their bottom line because of childcare. Well, we know that 65% of parents are late to work or leave early because of childcare issues. Working parents miss an average of 4.2 days of work every six months, and they are late or leave work early another 7.5 times in that same six-month period. That is a lot of work interruptions, a lot of work productivity stoppage, and it's really impacting the bottom line of our businesses. 63% of parents say childcare costs influence their careers, and 85% wish their employer offered some kind of childcare benefit. We know that childcare is impacting a business's ability to hire and retain staff. Sheri and I have sat in many meetings with business leaders as well as providers, and we're hearing stories like people are turning down jobs because there is no childcare in their community. We have providers who take calls daily from people who are considering coming in for an interview, and they're calling the childcare centers to see if there's anything available. And when they find there isn't, they're not even taking the position. So we have a childcare issue in the state of Iowa, and we also have a workforce issue. And we truly believe at the Women's Foundation that these two issues are interrelated and dependent on each other and need to be addressed together. And to do that, we started the Building Community Childcare Solutions Collaborative, and Muscatine has been a part of this collaborative with this for several years now. And just know that this is the only program of its kind in the state of Iowa. It is a unique network of over 45 communities working to increase the availability of quality, affordable childcare within their communities. We know that the solution is so big, it's going to take multiple solutions in multiple ways, but each are going to be independent and dependent on what needs are for those communities. So we are here today to kind of help you figure out what can the community do to increase the availability of quality, affordable childcare? How can businesses work to increase childcare? And how can our businesses and our community leaders come together and address public policy and advocacy issues to really turn childcare, you know, get some legislative actions out there to help us? Just wanted to share this with you. This is the map of all of our communities that we're working in, and of course, you can see that Muscatine is here. And so these are our participating communities. And the nice thing about this is these communities, they all work together, share resources, they share all kinds of things. We don't have to recreate the will. Let's talk about businesses and childcare, because that's one of the big reasons, and our communities. How can our businesses and communities lead the way? So first and foremost, get the facts. You're doing that right now. You're here, you're listening to this presentation, you're getting the facts. Understand how and educate others that could be major decision-makers that can learn more and help you move different solutions forward. For businesses, we highly recommend that first and foremost, they assess their employees' needs, collect the data, find out what they need. We have surveys that you can use, so you don't have to recreate the will, and you can find out what those needs are. Once you know what the needs of your employees are, you can develop strategies. And you can figure out what are those strategies best to meet the needs, and then you can invest in those strategies. So the Women's Foundation put together a toolkit, because we started to learn, thanks to COVID, that many businesses were starting to get it. They were understanding that childcare was impacting their bottom line and that they really wanted to do something, but they just weren't really sure what to do. So we put together this toolkit, which Sheri has available and is willing to share, which really just gives several different solutions that a business can think of once they know what their employees' needs are. And not only do we have the business's toolkit, but we also provide you with resources for this, best practices and testimonials from other businesses that have already done it, links to resources, and other exercises that you can do to move this work forward. We also met at Iowa Economic Development, oops, let me go back, let me go forward one more. We also met with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and talked with them about how important we felt businesses were to this issue and how they needed to be at the table. So we entered into a partnership with them, where we now have Sheri, who you've just met, as our employer engagement director. And Sheri is really here just to work with businesses and communities around our state that want to make an investment in childcare, but they're just not sure what to do. She's here to help them. And she's here to not only provide you with tools and resources, but she can also connect you to possible funders. She can connect you to other businesses that are already doing this. There's just a lot of different things that we've put together and tools that we've created moving this work forward because of the experiences that we've had. And the previous, and I'm not even sure if I can figure out how to go back. And this document is another one that she has available for you, which is, many businesses will say to us, "Okay, we know what we need to do, we know what we want to do, but what does that look like?" We've put together different examples of our... between local businesses and childcare providers in the area best, to kind of, as an example that you might be able to use. So again, the Women's Foundation is really excited that you all are interested in this. And we always like to end our presentations with a call for action. Please share with three people what you learned today. Talk about the data. Talk about the opportunities for businesses. Talk about what communities can do to invest. Start a dialogue, start a dialogue, if you're a business leader, with your business and your employees, if you're a community leader, start meeting with businesses and have conversations with them. Just really talk about whatever you can to get this going, and then encourage others to get involved and become a part of the effort. Okay, that's it. I know I went kind of fast, and I know you are all unmuted. See, I do want you to know that I am giving you Deanne and Sheri's contact information in this document, and I did forward it earlier, so you should all have it. Okay, I don't know how to unshare my screen.
Great job with the presentation, by the way, Dawn, and you guys. Any question? You're welcome. Any questions, comments from council?
Yes, Your Honor. I know that what we're looking for is childcare for those kids who are considered normal, but what about those who have special needs, like autism and other conditions that would allow a parent to work and at least get away from, have a little respite from the child for a little while? And that way, the family would be able to better prepare for therapy for the child and also increase their standard of living. I know there's not that many of them, but in the scheme of things, you know, there are those folks who... you know, there are those folks who just are living on one income because the child cannot be left with a babysitter.
So I can address that a little bit. Again, that's going to be dependent on the businesses that are wanting to get involved in those partnerships. So when they assess their employees' needs and they identify that there may be a need for care for children with special needs, that could be something that they can work into their partnership with the business. It's difficult, it takes a lot. Sheri, you might be able to answer this a little bit better because you actually have been in a childcare center and know a little bit more than I do.
Yeah, that's a great question. I would echo Dawn's sentiment that it's going to depend on the community. So in your community, does the current center or centers have the capability to offer childcare for children with special needs? If not, as she said, if we start with public-private partnerships, that's something I would definitely address with your businesses when they survey their employees to find out how much of a need there is. And then, without even getting the businesses involved, I would really go to your childcare center or centers in the area and ask if they have that capability. If so, as a community, I would look to figure out ways that you can help offset some of those costs.
Okay, thank you. And the next question I might have is, people who work with these special needs kids, I assume that they need a little bit more training and schooling than what you would to work with a regular, a "normal" child?
Yep, that's correct. And typically, most centers will have someone on staff who's able to do that or willing to get the certifications. Or if they don't have someone on staff or aren't able to get the certifications to be able to work with special needs population, they will know where to send you. So maybe it's going to be a specialized center. And if you don't have the capability to care for special needs students in your community, that may be something as a community that you want to look into. Expanding some of, helping your childcare center be able to take some classes, to get those specialized certifications, to be able to work with special needs students or partnering with school districts that have parent educators that are willing to work at some of these centers, maybe during after-school times, some of those high-peak times.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I do just quickly want to share with you, we are nowhere near experts in this field. And when it comes to the regulation, Sheri and I know enough maybe to be dangerous. We highly recommend and will refer you to DHS and Department of Ed and other people who can really answer those questions for you and really be more of a resource once you get, if you would get to that point. So know that, that's the other part that we do is we keep abreast of what else is being done, what other resources are out there, so we can hopefully connect you to what can help you make the best decisions and implement the best.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? And I know Kim Warren's hiding behind Max right there. I know you've been working really hard in the county and their community, so I, you know, thank you to you too with everything you're doing to keep things rolling as well. And great presentation, you three. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just know we're here to help you in any way that we can. So do not hesitate to reach out once you have an idea.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, take care. Bye-bye.
All right, next we have an update with the Community Foundation of Greater Muscatine South End Improvement Fund Project. Welcome Parks and Rec staff.
We had to get the birthing boy on TV a little bit, right? Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having us here tonight. Carol, I promise I'll forward the screen tonight unlike last time, okay? So just throw something over here if I don't. My name is Rich Kleins. I'm Director of Parks and Recreation. And thanks for having us here tonight. We're going to report on the Community Foundation of Greater Muscatine South End Improvement Fund Projects and give you a little update on the projects. The presentation's going to look a lot like the last presentation that we gave because we are going to talk about the same 11 components that make up the South End Improvement Project. The strategic plan, focus areas, you can see them up there. Excellent customer service, vibrant community, healthy community, safe community, reliable public infrastructure. All those things were taken into consideration as a goal, as a mission as we prepared these projects. Okay, so we'll get started. Component number one was the shelters. They were completed in the summer of 2022. The Kentstein Shelter has an electrical connection yet to be done, but they are usable, and we will start renting those out and making those available to the public. Component number two was the modular restroom. This is the tricky one, that is the focal point that's put us on hold for a couple of other items. This was supposed to be installed way back in August, as you recall, and then a vendor went, contacted us, and we had an arrangement, and we chose a different vendor. That vendor was supposed to deliver and install this back in November. Now, this is on delay, awaiting supply-demand issues is what we're having, supply chain demand issues we're having here. We're hoping to have this done this spring and have it hooked up and ready to roll. We will open the park again and have it usable without the restroom in place, where we want to hold things up for that. Okay. Taylor Park Site Plan, that included the parking lot at Taylor Park, the pickleball courts, the park site grading, the park site utilities. All this was, notice to proceed was given in April of '22. We are still working through some fine tuning of some of the elements that are complete. We hope to have this complete spring of '23. And I do know the pickleball courts have been used so far, and they've been very popular used so far, so that's kind of cool. I have noticed that the drainage plan worked out great. We do not have pooling or standing water in the park site, and that was key as we developed the site. Four, splash pad. Splash pads kind of put on hold until the restroom building arise because the water connections go through and with the restroom facility and the connections with that, so we kind of put on hold here. We hope to have this up and running as soon as the weather breaks. Probably first part of May, kids will be down there, or council members will be down there playing in the splash pad. You get warm playing pickleball, Mayor, you can just run right over and jump in that splash pad, right?
That's exactly what I'll do.
Absolutely. Playgrounds, playgrounds at Musser Park, Taylor Park, Sunset Parks. The playgrounds, again, supply chain issues. We hope to have the playgrounds installed this spring. As soon as the weather breaks, the weather has to be so warm in order for the poured-in-place rubber to be installed appropriately. Pictures, so you remember what those playgrounds look like, Musser Park. The concrete pads are in place. They are safe, there is not a liability with those. And so we did all the work that we could with the contractor preparing to have an early start whenever the weather breaks for us. Taylor Park. And remember, these are all-inclusive playgrounds at Musser Park and Taylor Park, and then Sunset Park. Heard lots of comments about the pictures alone. The citizens are excited to get these playgrounds up and running, and then they can rotate around the different playgrounds at different times. The Hawk Crossing at the corner of Oregon and Earl. Again, some supply issues were taking place. We are so thankful for MP&amp;W to help us out with this project and be a good partner with us. They've been spectacular. Again, we hope to have this crossing in place and usable by the spring, by spring. Okay. Mislandous items for Taylor Park, excuse me. So we had, we added a four-stall parking lot on the Pete's Tap side, Bond Street side. That is complete. The sidewalk is complete next to where the slough starts. Landscaping still needs to be done. Pickleball nets were purchased out of this component in the wind guards and the trashcan benches and shade fountains will all be purchased out of this component. So this one's not complete, but again, spring of '23. Taylor Park lighting is complete. It was completed back last July or so, but poles were in place in June. It is usable, the lights work, and citizens have been using them. Musser Park mislandous items. This is the park drainage. Again, we have been paying attention to the frost and heave that we've had so far, the snow that we've had. We're not seeing ponding or pooling of water yet, but we also know when the water raises in the river that there will be seepage coming through the levee. We understand that, we'll see where that takes us, and we will mitigate that if we do have standing water like we have in the past. Shade structures, benches, trashcans, still need to be purchased. The sidewalk is complete. We should have everything in place again by spring of '23. Item 10, the Musser Park Trail Link, that is completed and citizens have been using it. I've heard a lot of comments about this one. This connects the trailhead for the Riverfront Trail to the park, to Oregon, to the skate park. And now people do not have to use, go behind cars in the parking lot to get from one end of the park to the next. This has been very popular. This also connects the parking lot restroom to the new shelter that was put in the park. Again, very well used so far. The Kentstein Park Sunset Connector, this is under Professional Services. It is being engineered. We hope to go out to bid for this sometime in the next month. We hope to come back to council here probably in April for you to approve that with the connection beginning between Sunset Park and the soccer complex across the Causeway Bridge to pave it so there's easier accessibility from the Sunset Park residents to the rest of the entities in the park. Okay, here's the project overview map. Again, all the areas that we've looked at. As of right now, I believe we have, every project so far is under budget than what we projected it to be. And so we are holding off on doing the final purchases for the shade structures, trashcans, and the feel-good items and some of the drinking fountains until we see the bid results for the Kentstein Park Sunset Connector, just to make sure we're staying under budget of what that threshold was. That's it for tonight. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment, if you don't mind, Your Honor. I just think it's, I'm excited. I know I was down there kind of looking at Taylor Park and when things were still in the move, and I've been down a couple different times, and it looks like it's made a lot of great progress. And thank you for all that you've done.
You're very welcome, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Nick Gou, sitting here, has had an instrumental part, the Park and Rec staff, the office staff, Pat Lynch, Brian Steinman, Public Works staff have been so helpful. And of course, Public Works is responsible in doing this. MP&amp;W has been very gracious, helpful along the process as well. All looking at an awesome opportunity for Citizen Muscatine to enjoy the resources.
Councilmember Brocker.
I know we mentioned this in passing several times, but what about security cameras, Rich?
Security cameras are the next thing on our agenda. We have some cameras in the ARPA funds. We do have some camera set aside in this fund also, cameras down there. So we're going to get things in place. We have been really, it's the off-season for Parks and Rec, but between cemetery operations and domes and all kinds of stuff, we're keeping moving, folks. It's not a dull moment, that's for sure. Nick looks like he's probably 45, not 41, because of that, so beware.
I thought he was a lot older now.
Did you, Don?
I have, I have one more other question, just things that we've talked about, not necessarily to this project, but what about the, there was talk of a, oh, shoot. A shelter out at the golf course?
Right.
Do you remember that?
I don't remember that at all.
I think it was moving one of the shelters.
I do recall that. We're still trying to figure out how we're actually going to do that. We have some options, we have some things we think we can do, but we're trying to figure out the right way to do that. Ideally, we'd love to replace that restroom facility at the golf course. It is in need, and at that time, do a matching shelter to go with it at the same facility. But obviously, the golf fund as of now, it isn't quite ready for that to be talked about. There's a greater need for Green's Number Nine and Fifteen to be redone first. So we're trying to jungle the capital improvements with finding the funds to do a shelter. We're not done with the project, but it's been more of a struggle for the shelter than I wanted it to be.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for asking, though.
Any other comments?
I would just want to reckon, the team that's been working on this has done a really excellent job of manage, Rich is the project manager, and the supporting team he mentioned. You know, managing a project with this complexity, making sure that you stay under budget, they really have done a great job. And these are the kinds of projects that make sure that everybody in our community has an opportunity for recreation and, you know, healthy, healthy living and exercise. So kudos to the team for doing this work.
Great job. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
And next, we're going to have a discussion about the roundabout concept at Carver Corner.
Happy birthday, Nick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Steinman, Public Works Director, Pat Lynch, our City Engineer, and I will kind of walk you through the next couple items. We're going to be much more low-tech than everybody else was this evening, so. The first one, the discussion of the concepts for Carver Corner. Really, this is just a question to council. Our staff needs to know how we'd like to proceed with that intersection. Years ago, 2016, so almost seven years ago, there were many discussions, many designs that were put out there. At that time, with the public hearings that were done by Bolton and Mank, the designer of record, the roundabout was the preferred method of traffic control at that intersection. Not unanimous, but preferred. I think the issues have changed, and people are a little bit more familiar with roundabouts nowadays, and we're hoping that that's still your thought process. But with the developments happening now at the Carver Corner, we really need to know and be able, need to be able to speak with those other design engineers of how we want to proceed with that intersection. Making a roundabout there will probably change some of the grades in the area, and we need to be able to communicate that to those other developers so that they can prepare and design accordingly. So the question that's on the table tonight is, does the city council still prefer a roundabout at that location? If you do, I should mention that we will have to engage in a design engineer, most likely the people who designed it originally, and spend some money to come up with a design, but just to be prepared. And that will come before council for a vote because it'll be enough money that we'll have to get your permission at that point. But tonight, all we need is your consensus, if that's the way you'd like to proceed, and we can, we can move on from there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Any questions?
Clarification question, Brian. If this option was feasible for implementation, would you be in favor of that particular screen? Yes, or you have two columns there, 81% and 19%. Where'd you get those? Is it 81% of city staff favors the roundabout?
No, that was, that was the polling that was done at the public meeting that we had initially at the River View Center, so in 2016. That's what, that's where that information came from.
I can tell you, I have a family member that lives on Green Street, and they can't wait till the roundabout happens.
Oh, good.
So they're, they're aware, and they're just wondering when.
Okay. I would say, as you, you've got some information in your packet. The public doesn't have all this information, but just, you know, there's planning that has to go into it first. And then we have to, we don't have it funded or budgeted for construction, so we'll have to work on that as well. So it'll be a couple, a couple of years before it actually gets built, if we started, you know, tomorrow. But the planning was what, the piece that we really have to have at this point so that we can work with those other developers and contractors and engineers so that we're all on the same page. So when we do build this thing, we don't have things that are all kinds of wonky out there, so.
My only concern with that whole corner, and I am in favor of the roundabout there, is to make sure it's wide enough to get all of those tankers and grain trucks and fire trucks and everything else that goes through that intersection.
Absolutely. We share that sentiment as well, and that's something that will be designed and can be built for as we go forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Raylick?
Just based on the feedback that I've gotten about the current roundabout and Second and Mulberry is, everybody that I've talked to is, likes it. It took a while to get used to it, but now that they're used to it, I'm all in favor of the roundabout.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
I'm in favor. I think what's been nice is we've had two opportunities for people to see actual roundabouts in town. They've both been very successful. The most skeptical is probably Second and Mulberry because there was a lot of truck traffic there, and I think it's working very, very well. So I think we've been able to knock down some of the skeptics.
Yeah, I agree. That's one of the reasons this didn't get built right away. A, there was a funding issue, but B, we just couldn't come to a public agreement on what that should look like. And I think now that people are more used to it, I think it makes an easier decision. But again, we need your guys' consensus to move forward, so.
Any other questions?
Just a second, yeah. Any idea, Brian, of how much right-of-way we would have to tackle in that area?
There will be some. I don't, without getting some rough schematics done, we have a little bit of a rough concept, but there will be some. I can't answer how many square feet or anything like that at this time.
No, just a, you know, yes, we will, or?
Yes, yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I gotta speak quickly because I know Duane's chomping at the bit there. But I'm in favor of the roundabout, too. I just hope we can make plans to go forward and increase access or make it just maybe a little bit better for those businesses along, you know, Hershey and take all those things into consideration and as well as some of, you know, the brick buildings along there that may have some historic value, need to be considered and aesthetic value. And so, you know... need to be considered and aesthetic value. And so, you know, I think it's great, too. Sorry, Dwayne.
Councilmember Hopkins?
I care what else. I'm in favor of the roundabout, too, but I question, are we going to be able to tear those two brick buildings down, one on each side of Green Street?
That is something we'll have to look into. I can't answer that today. I mean, that, that may be a requirement. It may not be a requirement. Until we get some more information and engage a consultant, we, I can't answer that at this point. Is that a bland enough answer?
Any other questions or comments? So my question would be, is there a consensus to support the roundabout as presented and to also pursue a contract with a consultant?
I think you got your answer.
All right. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we're going to talk about discussion of courtesy sidewalk policy.
Yes, so the second item is, we, in the past, oh, years, we've had some, a lot of discussions about courtesy sidewalks. So just as a refresher, are you all familiar what the courtesy sidewalk is? And for those watching at home and in the audience, that is the piece of sidewalk that goes from the city sidewalk to the back of the curb. In a lot of places, they're called carriage walks, because back in the day, when you had a horse and carriage, you'd pull up your horse there, you'd guide your carriage onto that piece of concrete, and then you'd walk up to your front steps into your house. So there have been a lot of questions in the past. The city created a sidewalk policy in 2015, and at that point, the courtesy sidewalk was just, was defined as a private sidewalk which connects the public sidewalk to the street. New courtesy walk construction is prohibited, and existing courtesy walks will not be renewed. And that was pretty much it. And so we followed that policy until we started to build West Hill Sewer Separation. And a lot of the folks in that neighborhood had these courtesy walks, and a lot of folks in those neighborhoods wanted their courtesy walks back. And so at that, at the time this was going on, we had a different city engineer. We had a different city council who made different recommendations. And so in some instances, they were put back. In some instances, they were not. So we've kind of waffled on our own policy here. What we're looking for tonight is to try to present to you our current policy and our reasoning for sticking with it. Pat and I believe that the policy that is, as it is written, is correct based on ADA requirements, Department of Justice requirements, and our own city policies. So I don't have a whole lot to present on this. You, I did give you guys all of the information in your packets. The city code is there as well. I would, I would be more comfortable, I think, if you had questions for us that we could answer as opposed to me just trying to present and tell you what or why. And Pat is here to help answer those because he's our sidewalk expert.
Councilmember Gordon?
So I think, Director Steinman, I think what helped me understand it is when you spoke about, it's not just the courtesy sidewalk of your property. It's what is required to do across the street. And I think then that changed the whole tone for me. Can you expand on that so people understand it better?
I'll let Pat do that, yes.
Thanks.
As part of ProWAG, is a proposed right-of-way accessibility guidelines the Access Board put together to deal with issues in the right-of-way, because they're, they're unique to buildings. Buildings are different. Right-of-way is, is a totally unique animal. So they put together a, what they call ProWAG. In ProWAG, it states that any sidewalk that extends to the curb is considered a ramp. So you have to have an accessible ramp on that side. And for every accessible ramp you have on one side, you have to have a landing space on the other side, a safe crossing for whoever uses that crosswalk. So for every property to have a crosswalk across the street becomes very clustered in a, in a neighborhood if everybody wants one, to do it per the, per the American Disabilities Guidelines.
That drives up the cost.
Right.
I mean, and the design is different. It's not the simple little courtesy sidewalk.
No, it's, it's a ramp.
It's a ramp. It's got an arc out.
Right. And with the proximity of a lot of those, the sidewalks are close to the street. You only have about a two-foot boulevard between the sidewalk and the curb that you would have to lower the sidewalk for that longer stretch to get it down to curb level and, and to make it work on both sides. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brockert?
Yes, I had a resident contact me probably a couple months ago about this very subject. And the issue there is that they had a courtesy sidewalk, and then they, you know, construction occurred and it wasn't put back in place. And this particular person has issues, because they're a little bit older and they have mobility issues, and they really liked having that courtesy sidewalk. So, yeah. Now what do we do?
Right. In, in those instances, what we have done in the past, there's, it's kind of a gray area at that point. If there's a legitimate, let's say it's a bus, a bus comes and picks somebody up at their house, that they're, they're excessively challenged. They, they have to get out to the bus. The bus drops down to the curb and lifts them up. That becomes a bus stop. So we can put a pad there for a bus stop for them if, if that's the case. If they, if they drive themselves and they're able to get out to the vehicle and drive themselves, then we can do a ramp out to a handicapped stall, but we have to have the room for it. And what code calls out is 14 feet from the back of curb to the right-of-way. You have to have 14 feet to be able to install one of those. If we don't have 14 feet, then you have to use the ends of the block and come around. So that's what the guidelines, how they direct us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I could, I would make one more comment. There are, so what we're proposing here is not to go out around and yank everybody's courtesy walks out, right? That's not something that we're planning on doing. If they're existing, we'll consider them grandfathered in and they can stay. This is merely for construction. When we go through, like for West Hill or another city project, if we have to take them out, we're not going to put them back in. There are some alternatives that residents could do on their own if they wanted to hardscape it, like put in pavers or bricks, something like that. It doesn't qualify as ADA sidewalk, so therefore, there's kind of a gray area there, too, where they can have, they can have something to land on. Now, we're not going to accept like plywood or pallets, things like that. But if somebody wanted to put in a brick pavers or stepping stones in the right-of-way and maintain those on their own as part of their right-of-way obligations, we would, we would allow that. We wouldn't necessarily order those out unless it became a tripping hazard or we had a complaint, something like that, that drove that. We're not, like I said, so this isn't going out and picking on people. It's just a matter of our policy for putting things back during our own construction projects.
Okay. Any other feedback on the policy?
I do, Mayor. And if I could ask, I've got some lengthy comments.
Yes, sir.
Because I think people should have their courtesy walks in front of their home. Everyone on my street has a courtesy walk. Every one of them gets used productively by the residents. I would like to respectfully ask someone from, a representative from the Americans with Disability Act organization, someone from SUDAS, the statewide, SUDUS, the statewide urban design specification office, or even our city engineer, to explain to me how it's safer for a student or for a citizen, elderly, handicapped, any citizen, to walk out onto a property right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk, walk out onto un-scooped snow, walk out onto rough grass, turf, you know, whatever you want to say, how that could be safer than walking out onto a courtesy walk. You know, if, if one of the so-called experts can explain that safety feature to me, that would certainly make a difference in my opinion. But that courtesy walk in front of a person's home is access for, in a large way, access for people to go into that home. For instance, when I have a Christmas party, December 23rd, snowing, blowing, okay, my courtesy walk was scooped and cleaned in front of my house. And I've had other people, you know, complain about the necessity to keep their courtesy walk, okay? So I no longer have a courtesy walk. My friends pull up, elderly, a few, doesn't make any difference, because there are some special circumstances, right? You guys talked about a special circumstance a few minutes ago. Well, a special circumstance to me is how convenient it is for that resident or that person to step out on a street. There's language in this presentation about sidewalk intersections. How many people in this room talk about a sidewalk intersection and think courtesy walk? A sidewalk intersection is a sidewalk that goes from corner to corner and corner to corner. When a person steps out of their, their car in front of my house, it's no different than stepping up onto a step, okay, up over that curb. How far does the curb have to be cut back when a courtesy walk is put in, if it had to be on a level, you know, on a, on a slope? How far does that curb need to be cut back? Can it be cut back right in line with the courtesy walk?
The snow, or?
My courtesy walk, when I have to replace it, and I'm going to replace it someday, if I'm still around. And everybody, everybody else in musketeen should be able to replace their courtesy walk if that's what they want to do, okay? And we have a blurb in this presentation about the betterment of our community means increased sidewalk access. And we're decreasing sidewalk access. So I got a lot of questions about this. It needs to be revisited, and there needs to be some, okay, I'm getting too far ahead.
That's all right. I'm going to answer the, the question you had before. What we had, what we provide now, because to do work in the right-of-way, you have to pull a right-of-way permit to work in the right-of-way. Currently, there are three permits. There's a permit to put the sidewalks in. There's a permit to dig in the right-of-way and a permit to cut in the street. So that's currently what we have. We're trying to revise that, but currently, that's what we have. To be able to put, to repair your sidewalk out in front of your house, we allow property owners, if you're doing one panel here or there for maintenance purposes, we allow the property owner to do that themselves. However, if you take out the courtesy sidewalk going towards the street, we can't let you put sidewalk back in because of the way the, the policy's written and the way the ADA and ProWAG, the proposed right-of-way guidelines are written. So we, because of the way those are written, we can't allow you to put that courtesy walk back in. However, like Brian mentioned, we do allow pavers because it's a, it's a designation between sidewalk and a hardscaped area. It's not a sidewalk then at that point. But if it's concrete like the sidewalk is, it encourages people to cross mid-block without a crosswalk. So it becomes unsafe at that point.
I'm, I'm asking, Pat.
Yes.
When I replace my courtesy walk.
Right.
Out to the curb, what's the, what's the area of that curb that I have to cut out to replace?
To build it per spec, it would depend on slopes. If your, if your sidewalk, depending on how far back away from the curb you are, you have six inches to drop down, and you can only drop down one, one inch per foot. So you would have to be at least six inches back to be able to get the proper slope down.
I mean, the curb to each side, do I have to cut you that out, or can I just cut right the, the width of the sidewalk that I want to replace? The courtesy walk?
I'll, I'll get to that. I'll get to that. So to be able, the courtesy walk, to be able to make that compliant, you would have to make it, make it a ramp. So one inch per foot is the, the maximum slope you can do. So depending on how far your sidewalk is away from the curb, you might have to tear additional sidewalk out, drop it down, to be able to drop it down. And then at the curb, you can do one of two things. You can flare the sidewalk up on the sides and to drop it down, or you can wrap the curb around and follow the ramp up. Does that make sense?
It does. It's unnecessary. It's unnecessary. And before I would agree to any of this, I'd like to have one of the so-called professionals tell me what's the most efficient thing to step out onto, a courtesy walk or snow, ice, uneven grass, dirt?
And that, and that's why we suggest the pavers, is so that you don't have to go out on the uneven grass or dirt, and so that you can still scoop that area and you have a hard surface.
And what about the statement in our, our presentation about improving our sidewalk system? Is the, is the courtesy walk part of our sidewalk system? I mean, you know, I guess this issue gets me more fired up the more I think about it. Because, you know, if someone has a mobility issue, you know, wheelchair and so forth, hey, believe me, I'm all for taking care of that situation. But for someone to pull up in front of my house and not have a courtesy walk that's put in the right way with concrete and matches the curb and so forth, and we can't do that, sidewalk policy. I don't know, there are a couple of things in here. You know, we talk about improving our sidewalk system. We, go ahead.
I was going to pull it up to you, John, so we can share. But what I would say to answer your question is, your courtesy sidewalk is not part of the city's sidewalk system. It is private. And it's in the right-of-way, so it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain it. But we, the city, cannot put them back because to put them back just violates federal law, federal code, the way they're set up. Without, without building them to the specifications, without dropping them down, making them detectable warning surfaces, we, the city, cannot put them back in. That's why the policy states that courtesy sidewalks are, new construction is prohibited and existing courtesy walks will not be renewed. If a, if a developer wanted to come in and build a new subdivision and put certain courtesy sidewalks in front of the houses and make every one of them ADA compliant at their expense, we would probably allow that because we really couldn't stop that. I don't think anybody's going to want to do that, because now you're, now you've got a crosswalk at every home, at every home, right? Because that's what you're baking. So you really, that would be up to them. But that's, the answer to your question, yes, it's not part of our city sidewalk system.
There's no courtesy walk in this diagram here.
Right, because they don't, they don't not recognize those as a sidewalk.
Assistant Minister, would you be able to explain the history of the policy?
Well, I just want to mention what Pat and Brian are doing are following the city's policy. The policy says courtesy sidewalks will not be renewed, and new ones won't be installed. So I think the options for council would be that if you wanted to amend the policy, we would need to get some legal input on the legal risks of doing so. And we're happy to do that. We can do that if you'd like. But I believe there would be risk, and this is why Pat is, is following the policy. But it's, it is, it's up to the council. It is council-level policy. And if you would like to entertain that, we can, we can do the analysis, yes.
What I, what I can state and Pat can confirm this or, or deny this, but I, as a licensed professional engineer, he is required to follow certain standards. So if you direct him to do this, or us, he will not be able to sign off on that, at risk of his licensure. The council can do that and take the risk of, you know, basically what happens with these sidewalk policies is if anybody that, that falls and has a lawsuit against the city and points out that we do not have an ADA compliant ramp, can sue us and we would be, what's the word, not, we'd be at risk.
Reliable.
Reliable, thank you. So that's the reason we have these policies in place.
So we have a, if somebody gets out and steps up on the right-of-way, dirt, snow, ice, they're going to sue the city?
They could, but because there's not a city-owned sidewalk there, the city is, is held harmless for that.
But it's city-owned property.
It's, no, it's, it's city right-of-way, but it's public, it's private property. The property owner's responsible to maintain their, the right-of-way as part of theirs. So this, in the corner here, if there's a house sitting there, the property owner there is required to maintain that, that corner lot, right? So they would have to be, they would mow the grass on both sides of the sidewalk and shovel the sidewalks down to the corners and back. It's the city, it's their property. They get assessed for it, but it's the city's right-of-way, so we have the ability to go in there and do repairs or install utilities or anything like that in that area.
Well, like I say, I'd like to have someone explain to me the safety factor of stepping up onto that right-of-way that doesn't have a nice sidewalk on it. Criteria for the prioritization of sidewalk construction projects. The city's goal is for all members of the community to have the opportunity to travel safely to their destination by foot, bike, or other motorized means. Improvements to the city's sidewalk network will be one of the primary means of achieving this goal. Further up, and I think in the, the side, or maybe it was the, in the sidewalk summary, some information here about the city engineer's discretion. I can't find that right there. So I got a lot of questions about this.
If you'd like, John, we can, we can sit down and talk about it at a different point than this meeting, or if you'd like to stay.
I think I'd get the same place that, well, I think I'd get the same place that, well, you know, that'd be great, yeah, because I think it needs to be pursued. There needs to be some way for someone to replace a courtesy walk. Okay? And with some reason, because like I say, it doesn't make sense. And the, you know, I'd like to have someone from the ADA explain that to me. You know, that's fine.
And we can get you in contact with those folks if you'd like that as well. Basically, what as staff, what our responsibility?
I shouldn't have to do that.
Well, as staff, what our responsibility is is to relay that back to the council, which is what we've done, which is what our policy is based on. So I'm not sure what else that you would like from us other than to sit down and talk through it some more or?
So what I'm, may I, Mayor?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing from you is if you have an accessway into your house that you have the slide down, then you have to have the same on the other side, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Regardless if there's a house there or not.
Right, it becomes a mid-block crossing. So basically, what you have to assume is that you're either walking, you're either blind and you're walking or you're in a wheelchair, you're walking or you're unable to identify where you are, right? So if I'm walking down a sidewalk and I'm vision impaired and I'm using a cane and I come across a courtesy walk and I take a hard left and all of a sudden I fall off the curb around the middle of the street, that's a problem, right? That's why we have, that's why we have the pedestrian ramps at the corners, the detectable surface, right? Those red raised ribbon, rumble strips type of thing. So now I'm walking, then I have a cane. So to build this right per ADA, if I was to, you know, identify a left turn on a sidewalk and I came across it and then I found a detectable warning, now I know I need to stop and wait for traffic. If I'm in the middle of a block, I'm not at a crosswalk, right? Where traffic has to either stop or yield because of the way the crosswalk or intersections are configured. Mid-block crossing, A, how am I gonna know if there's a car coming or not? And B, they don't have to stop, I have the right of way, but mid-block crossing is different. So it's, that's the danger there, that's the difference. We're not arguing whether or not it's safe for somebody to get out of a car and go up to a house, right? It's more about the safety of the traveling public on the city sidewalk and where they end up going from there. So I don't disagree with John's point that it's not, it may not be as safe to get out in the street and not have a place to land. That's kind of a different argument here than what we're trying to say our sidewalk policy is. Our sidewalk policy is for the publicly installed walks that are for the traveling public, not necessarily the courtesy.
So just to follow up on that, so what you're saying then is, from what I'm hearing, is that we can still have those little walkways, but if we're going to replace them, that we would have to do it in a format that would be like individual bricks, so it's not like a concrete?
Right, the way we do permitting in the right of way now is if, let's say yours is bad and you want to replace it or repair it, you have to come to the city and get a permit. We can't allow that, we can't issue that permit for that because it violates our own policy and it violates ADA policy. So to make it a sidewalk, if you wanted to come in and make it a hardscape with some pavers, something like that, now it's no longer considered a sidewalk, it's considered something else.
So would I need a permit for that then as a citizen? Yes.
Yes.
Just checking.
Councilmember Osborne?
I think this became a bigger issue than the immediate question. Immediate question is, you know, we've eliminated some of these sidewalks because of the project. We have in the past had an uproar about that, people want them back. The city decided to put them back as a special case for this project. I see that as an exception conversation versus a change policy conversation. You know, we can have the change policy conversation, I agree a lot with what John is saying. But, but these courtesy sidewalks are privately owned, right?
Yes.
And if we put them in and sign it over to the homeowner, it's still privately owned.
However, it's in our right of way.
Well, so are all the existing ones.
Right, and so what happened?
I mean, we're allowing all the existing ones.
Well, the previous engineer and the previous council did that, yes. Now we have a new council and a new engineer. So the new engineer is not of the same opinion as the previous engineer, which is the reason we came back here. So our current engineer is interpreting this in a different way and does not feel that they have, that the council has the authority to waive or not because we're talking about federal regulations, we're not talking about city regulations at this point. We're trying to follow city code or federal code as well. So the city has a policy that requires us to follow state urban design standards and which follows federal policy. The previous engineer, the previous council allowed us to not follow those. At their decision, that's fine, so far it's so good, but current staff are not comfortable with that and do not recommend that.
Okay.
It's a council decision.
Is it possible to make everybody happy if we replace the courtesy sidewalks with pavers?
Yes.
It would serve the same purpose and I think we could allow that if the council decided to do that and had the city pay for that, yes.
Just for this project? I'm not talking about, you know, we're gonna do it forever and ever and ever, but?
I would say that would be a council decision that staff could implement if so agreed.
And Pat, you'd sign off on that then?
Yes, because the pavers become a footpath and not a sidewalk, not a public sidewalk. So it's more of a hardscaped area or patio type of thing that goes with the house as opposed to a sidewalk in the right of way. You want, the reason we do the detectable warnings at the curb ramps is to let people that are vision impaired know that there's something coming by a difference in the sound of their cane or what it feels like under their feet. So if they go off onto a brick paver path, they know they're not on the sidewalk anymore. So that's the reason why you do a differing material.
So if we did, you know, the construction of a paver-type concerted courtesy sidewalk, you know, we're talking about like a, probably a hard pack base, sand, you know?
There's standard specs for that, right.
Yeah, yeah, with the cloth, so we don't have the weeds growing up through them and they don't get all wonky after.
Right.
How many, well, I shouldn't pose the question that way. Specifications for new sidewalks and replacement of damaged sidewalks, read through this. The Iowa statewide urban design and specifications manual contains a thorough overview of design standards for both sidewalks and ADA compliant curb ramps at sidewalk intersections. Now, sidewalk intersections. And it's gonna pop in my mind, a courtesy walk as a sidewalk intersection? So where is the, you know, I have a question about the prudent interpretation of that statement by our city staff. You know, I don't know, is that the right way to interpret that? A sidewalk intersection? Would I call my courtesy walk in front of my house a sidewalk intersection? I don't think I would, I've never thought of it that way at all.
So what we consider a sidewalk intersection, John, is like this right here at a corner.
On a corner?
Yes.
Of a thorough fair sidewalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do not consider the courtesy walk to be a sidewalk intersection.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon, oh, sorry.
What we, the way we interpret it is that any sidewalk intersection must have a curb ramp and a crosswalk, right? So sidewalk intersection, curb ramp have to have a crosswalk. Any sidewalk that extends to the curb is considered a ramp to the curb, so?
Is it a sidewalk intersection?
If it becomes, the courtesy walks, we don't want them to be because we don't want people crossing in mid-block. Those are mid-block crossings. So we, mid-block crossings are unsafe. You have, there's a lot of stuff that we put in to try to make those things safe. We've designed raised crosswalks at mid-blocks so that people have to slow down. We put up flashing signs, we do a lot of safety precautions at mid-block crossings to try to make them safe because they are not safe. So the best policy to have is to not have mid-block crossings. So if we're gonna have, this is not a unique issue to this city. The cities all across the nation are dealing with this right now. And in the policies that the ADA pushes out, I went through a training in 2015 on this, on ADA policies in the right of way. And this was one of them that they put out there. They said absolutely no courtesy walks, or they called them carriage walks, but absolutely no carriage walks. Because they interpret them, the Department of Justice interprets them as mid-block crossings. So if you have a mid-block crossing, then you have to make sure that that mid-block crossing is safe.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Pat and Brian, thank you so much for taking what should be a simple, common sense topic and expanding on it. It's not. And I think you're doing the right thing by administering and supporting the current code. It's unfortunate, I mean, courtesy walks seem like a simple thing and they definitely aren't. I do appreciate you bringing up the paver option. And we need to help promote that, help educate people if we can because you've given us something to do in place of the whole ramping situation. So thanks for taking the time because you've invested a lot of time, training and education and understanding the law. So just, I want to say that.
Is there any need to talk?
I appreciate your time too, and I think it's a complex issue. Okay? And I think it's difficult for me to understand why people can't understand that it's a complex issue. Whether it be the government agencies and so forth that think they can call the situation in front of a large number of courtesy walks in this town. A heavily traveled mid-block crossing that is dangerous because they're not. They're not. In many, many situations, it is a complex issue, a convenience issue, okay? So I appreciate you guys coming in too. We've had fired up conversations before, you know? We remember the conversation we had about having the signal to go straight, okay? So, you know, I think.
Is there any direction we need from the attorney?
Well, yeah, I mean, has council completed their deliberation? I don't know, I don't want to cut you off.
Is there any other comments, questions, concerns from anybody? Any council members?
My comment would be to offer pavers to those folks that we've removed their former courtesy sidewalks that were, I mean, we can't go back. I mean, maybe we can, but I think that's another discussion if we want to discuss code change. It doesn't sound like we really can. I do agree with John about maybe getting some more opinions on it. Nothing against the opinions of staff that we have, but we did have a former engineer say it was okay one time, another one says it's not. So, you know, I just, I don't like sending mixed messages to the public. They obviously really are passionate about having these courtesy sidewalks. And we need to work to make our customers happy if we can. So I would like to recommend that we move forward, at least for the sewer separation project, that when we remove courtesy sidewalks, that we offer a paver solution.
Do we need legal opinion on that specific topic for papers?
Well, I think we want, we want some general direction from the council as a body, right?
So that's my, I'm throwing that out as a direction and see if anyone else might agree.
What Councilmember Osborne mentioned, is that kind of a consensus to move forward with it or not? And just?
I think we stick to the current code, I just, the way it is. It's not, those are not ADA, it's still trip hazard, it's still fall hazard. I like the idea of courtesy sidewalks, but they're, they're just, they just don't fit with the concepts of the natural ADA compliance right now.
But the pavers are just as acceptable as the?
If you've ever had pavers, they're dangerous. I've got pavers and I hate them.
How about everybody else, would you like to stay with the current policy, just a consensus?
Big paver.
There you go.
You what?
I don't want pavers.
I'm more in favor of staying with the current policy and I'm not totally in favor of carte blanche during the pavers for the West Hill separation without understanding the cost. Because we don't know what that cost would be. So at this time, I'm not in favor of that.
We could certainly, we could put pen to paper on that.
Yeah, I can tell you, it will be more than concrete, but I can't, I don't know how much more, but we can get that repaired easily.
Yeah, we could do that, we could bring that back to council and under other business or something.
I don't think there's very many of them.
Thank you.
So we had, I hear two issues. One was what do we do for this project? And the other is the overall policy that we have. So is there, you know, a sort of a general direction around, do you want to reevaluate the policy? If so, I would include a legal analysis and some information from the ADA of their policy and the guidelines. So I could incorporate that in any evaluation of the current policy. But again, I do think there would be risks to it, so I would definitely want to do an analysis.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are following federal guidelines as well as ADA. And if federal says we can't do it, then, sorry.
We could put more work.
None of us have horses and buggies and carriages anymore.
We can put some work, I don't think it would be terribly costly. We can, I can do a little bit of like work on that and get back to the council if that would make you feel, you know, if that would reaffirm the current policy, that'd be fine, we can do that.
Well, if I could just ask, please, quick, does it ever happen that you just hit the override button and do what's common sense? I'm sorry, but, I mean, you know, does SUDAS or?
Depends on the situation. It depends on the situation.
Okay, well, then if there is a situation where they hit, somebody hits the override button and lets do what's right, then I'm for sticking right here and fighting for it.
It comes down to liability.
I don't think that's probably gonna happen, so I'll agree.
I don't think Pat would sign off on it though.
Right, I can't, right.
That's the thing, so maybe, and there's no action taken tonight regardless, so it'd be nice to probably get some information.
So Councilmember Genrich and others, generally when we look at these issues, we look at the risk.
Yes.
What's the probability and the consequence? And if there's too big of a risk, we don't hit the override button. If the risk is relatively small compared to the benefit, sometimes we do. This is, this and their expertise says this isn't the case there. The risk is bigger than we would be willing to accept. So back to the question, do we, do you want us to invest a little bit of energy in evaluating the current policy?
No.
No.
What for?
All right, there you have it.
I think I've made my point.
I would like some numbers put to pavers that we could offer.
That we will definitely do. I got direction on that one, I was asking about the policy part of it.
I think some will turn it down, but I think we ought to offer it.
My only concern with doing that, Jeff, is it's like, okay, the rest of us that have little walkways that go to everything, are we gonna do the whole city, are we gonna make that an option for everyone or is that just for those?
Well, the cat's already out of, in my opinion. We can send mixed signals if we want, but what the council has already said, we're gonna replace those courtesy sidewalks.
We did?
No, we didn't.
Previous council.
Previous council, dear.
Not this council, not this engineer.
But the first one I was on.
But the city that we represent.
But we're talking about the policy that's in current place and the policy in current place does not have.
No, I'm not talking about policy at all. I'm talking about during the West Hill Sewer Separation Project, council already voted on replacing those courtesy sidewalks. We would actually have to vote to undo that. Get on the record to say we've changed our minds. Because we've already said, voted to do it. Not we, but?
Dr. Stein?
There was, that was an in-depth discussion and there was no vote on that. It was a consensus.
We did go out and replace them for folks.
It was, at that point, I reviewed the meeting, it was recommended that we put them back if the people there wanted them and that we changed the sidewalk policy. The previous engineer did not change the sidewalk policy, the sidewalk policy is still the same as it was. We did put some of those back. To my knowledge, we didn't do everything that the council said in that closed session, but we did put some back. I think, to me, the turning point was when the city engineer retired and the new city engineer was hired and there's a different interpretation now. So, and it was a clean stop at phase four as well. Phase five, we didn't put anything back in, we haven't yet. So if council directs and votes to put them in for phase five, we can make that happen. I don't think we run any risk of going back or not having to go back because it was never an active item.
Yeah, I think the one thing council would want to consider is you're setting a precedent, so you'd need to be, want to be able to continue that. It would need to be continued in the next phase of West Hill and probably other projects too. That's up to council, if you want to do that, that's fine, but we just, I want you to know that going in, yeah. But we'll cost it out for what we're doing now and we'll come back to council with that information.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And next item is E, is an update on activities included the Grand View corridor project. And next item is E, is an update on activities included the Grand View Corridor project.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're doing low tech tonight. So, it, update on the Grand View Corridor project, revitalization project was requested, and so it's been a little slow lately. I will make that disclaimer right now. It's not that there's nothing going on, but it is slower. In March of 2021, we started the program. After that time, we had 11 meetings before May of 2022. At that point, participation in the meetings kind of waned substantially, so we had about four people showing up to each meeting. After that, we had, the core group met, the council members and staff met and talked about additional stuff. We've been working with the chamber. But before that, we did a number of things that led to some activities in later 2022 that still furthered the project a little bit. So, as I said in the memo, there were five pillars. If you want to ask Brian, sorry. It's been a long day. About any of the street projects, you can, but we have economic development, which we had four business meetings to talk about what was inhibiting or what might help their business sustain, especially through the construction period. What we heard was that there was an impact. First, there was COVID, and then there was the streets. So, we had the program. Anyways, so, we helped four businesses either start or expand their business, make improvements through the Small Business Forgivable Loan Program in that area. We work with property owners ongoing. Some purchase property, some others own property to either help them occupy those commercial spaces or to make improvements to those commercial spaces. We've, I've been working with a property owner lately to help try to find some grant funding. It's because it's a substantial rehab. So, we worked on that a little bit. And then, obviously, we worked with LOVES to get through the TIF process and get that under construction and open now, thankfully. And then, right now, we're working with the chamber on the ARPA funds that were allocated and specifically dedicated to the South End, on the programming of those, those dollars to make the most impact. And I talked a little bit more about that in the memo. The other thing we did was the, was the business support. So, we had three business meetings in which they were mostly concerned about being able to survive the dual impacts of COVID and Grand View Corridor. We started the, the Small Business Emergency Assistance for businesses that were directly adjacent to Grand View Avenue in the, in the construction zone. We gave out 18, 10, not gave out, we had successful applicants for 18, $10,000 forgivable loans. And then, and then we moved on to residential support primarily. So, the residential support, we had two larger meetings where we used the heart and soul model. Tell us what you like, what you'd like us to build on, that kind of thing. We heard back about, they wanted, they, people remembered, there are a lot of long-term residents in the Grand View Corridor. And they remembered being able to fish in their neighborhood, right? And, and being able to access some of those natural resources. They, obviously, you're all aware, they missed the grocery store. And I get it. I, it's very convenient, right? So, that resulted in the farmer's market in the South End over the past summers. And then, we continue to work on the recreation projects that Parks and Rec is doing as well as looking at what services there are to support those residents. So, we started with ARPA dollars, the grant programs, Tier One and Two, two grant programs. The first one is Tier One, our small grants to support reconnecting the community members. And so, that program's been open since October, and we have given out four grants. They're $1,000 each to do community engagement activities. The butterfly event, the, there's a planned event, one of them, so one of the grants is to a, to a future program, which is a cleanup in the South End neighborhood by Keep Muscatine Beautiful. Musserville Church is going to host a monthly, or is hosting monthly movie nights. They started last month or this month. And then, the fourth one, oh, well, Shop with the Cops. So, helping specifically children in the South End neighborhood enjoy their Christmas a little bit more. Tier Two grants will open on February 1st, and those are specifically for facade improvements to primarily houses. And so, if it's exterior work, something you can see from the street, it'd have to be four or more houses. So, again, putting that tie to helping residents connect with residents. One of the properties could be landlord, landlord-owned, but they have to work in partnership, and there's some details about trying to get to the efficiency, right? Making more of an impact by having houses that are closer together. There's no, there's no geographical tie, other than the closer the properties are, the, the higher they'll score when that opens up. And, and there's a 50, there's a one-for-one match for that, except for it can be in kind. So, that's kind of the overview of those programs. So, we'll continue, and as I asked Peggy and Nadine and Carol the other day, it's, it's, we have stuff that's starting, and now it's time to kind of start again, because my brain is working again. But, we'll get that going, and, and what are the next steps? And we'll keep working with the chamber to finalize the ARPA Economic Development Programs here pretty shortly, too. And I'll answer any questions.
Well, it's more of a comment. Thank you, Jody, for the update, because we've talked, we've talked about the five pillars, Nadine and I, and previous mayor, and Mayor Brad. Carol, I mean, how we want to represent Grand View Corridor and help it. And so, it's important, but I want to point out on the small business grant, it's, oh, 18 grants. 18 grants of $10,000 each, which would not have happened unless Brian had mentioned something at one time. And I appreciate that, that other cities do help some businesses around construction areas, and I wish we'd done it sooner. But that $180,000 did not come out of the general fund. Is that correct, Carol? I think it was more...
It's a tax increment fund.
Right, so it's funds used from taxing, but it wasn't general fund. So, we were able to help 18 businesses. We walked, we talked to quite a few, but that's pretty impressive to do it that quickly. And it was just a spark of a little idea. And I hope that the Tier One and the Tier Two, that we can get some homes in that area interested. We had some discussions last fall, but this is pretty incredible stuff in that area. So, thank you for all your hard work. And Nadine, I mean, we've talked to a lot of people.
I actually didn't mention, one of the things I do think we'll do in the spring is a cleanup. I've actually talked with Dave down at the transfer station about how we implement a cleanup in the neighborhood, so.
So, thank you so much.
I was in a meeting this last fall with some representatives of Keep Muscatine Beautiful, and they were floating some very exciting ideas for activities in South End coming this spring. And I know Brenda's out of town, but Tony and some, a couple of gals from MPW were very excited about what we might be able to do. And I think they were looking for grant funds or getting some funding somehow for the project.
She, she was very excited about it.
One thing I would mention, too, we're getting ready to kick off our Wayfinding Plan, and we are including, I think, a business owner, maybe, from the, from the South End. There may be an opportunity to integrate some branding, something for, for that portion of our community, celebrating its history, you know, those kinds of things into that effort. So, you know, leveraging those kinds of opportunities, things that we're already working on, yeah.
I do want to talk, ask questions about the construction.
Are there, I guess I would ask while I have your attention, is, are there thoughts about projects you want us to look at going forward or that are missing? If you want to email me, just do that. Thank you.
As the parks become fully developed, open houses, maybe, at each park when they, you know, maybe ribbon-cutting type thing, I don't know. But, some kind of rhythm of news type thing, hey, they're open.
Yes, we could do, we could do that. Yes, we could do a ribbon-cutting. I'm sure the chamber would help us support that if we wanted to.
And I will say...
With the new gold scissors.
That, that Keep Muscatine Beautiful project program that they applied for, while they're called, they called it a cleanup for the grant purposes, which is part of it, it is a much bigger part. It's part of what Nadine's talking about. Like, it is a opening for when the, when especially Taylor Park is done, to invite the community out and have a community kind of block party.
Yep, perfect.
It's a good idea. Any other questions for Jody? All right, Brian, come on down.
So, Brian, we'll try to keep it somewhat short. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Because, I mean, it all started with the Grand View Reconstruction Project, and it grew around that for the whole zone. But can you give us an update? Because I was concerned with, there was still some construction debris. It looks like it's gone up by the railroad office.
Okay.
We had money set aside for the corner of Hauser and Grand View. There's been some work there, and then also around the trail for cleanup. I know you've got some punch list items, like the benches or those, nice to have. But can you give us a real brief update?
On the, all the construction?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, the paving has all been done, as you probably have noticed, the mainline driving, driving on paving, roadway paving, probably a better term. We still have some sidewalks to do. There are, there is still quite a bit of landscaping to do associated with those sidewalks. That will all be planned to be done in the spring. So, once that's done, that's pretty much, we go to punch list after that. The paint striping has been done. The signals are now functional at Oregon. That's most of it. As far as the rest of the Grand View project area, the corner of Hauser and Grand View was, the trees were taken down. And if you've noticed, there's a lot more steel and metal in there than was anticipated. So, that, the contractor that we have working with us on that has asked for some time to get around that. They're, they have to do some, some site grading in there, and then he's got a potential source for a whole lot of soil to come in and, and take that bank from straight up off of Mittman to more of a gentle slope, which is going to take more material than anticipated when originally bid. So, we're working with him on that. Gave him a time extension to get that in order. Then that will be top dressed with soil and seeded. So then, we can at least mow it and maintain it as a, an empty lot or whatever, but at least it can be mowed and not be weedy. The other side of Grand View, the south side, if you will, by the trail, between the trail and the hot, and the roadway, we looked at taking all the trees out of there. What we realized with that probably isn't feasible or a really good idea. You're going to lose a lot of shade, some of the nice seclusion that we had with the trail. So, the, the current plan is to reduce that and go from the edge of the roadway to basically the power line, line is, and, and take all that stuff out of there. Grab all the trees out of there, smooth that back out and seed that. So, we're, we're re-quoting that, because the scope that we originally had quoted for that was different. So, we want to make sure that that is a better scope, so we can get quotes for that. So, that's in process now. So, we should have that. That'll probably start in the spring, although if we can get that done, winter, if the ground's frozen, it's a good time to do the trees, because you don't get stuck in there. But, right now, there's no frost in the ground, so it's kind of a weather-dependent type of thing. And then, coming into spring, everything else should have started being cleaned up. We, I think the contractor has, I want to say 30 or 40 more working days left on the contract. We did, we, we did have to redo the, at the South End Entrance Monument across from the Headquarters Restaurant. There was a conflict there with the new sewer that came from LOVES to tie into our sewer, so we had to modify that monument a little bit. So, that will get done in the spring as well. And there's a road crossing that goes there to tie in the trail to the sidewalk. And then, since we've had so much development in that corridor with the, with the apartment complex and some of those other things, the sidewalk that we did, didn't initially have sidewalk going all the way down on the town side of Grand View, if you will. So, we're trying to, we've got a design to go for that, and then we will try to get that built as well, some of our sidewalk funding. I don't think we can fit it into this project as part of the budget, but we will get that in as well, so that it'll be a connected sidewalk from Hauser down to Headquarters. And then you could cross and get on the trail at that point. So, those are all upcoming items. But as far as the construction, the majority of the construction is done. We are monitoring the roadway. We did make some changes there. Obviously, there's not, there's no longer a signal at Hauser and Sampson. That is a two-way stop, and only the northbound, southbound traffic stops, so that's a throughway there, so we're monitoring that. We are monitoring the speed limit to make sure that what we have is appropriate. What is there, right now, is a construction zone, so it's still 25. For those of you who drive that, you should slow down through there. It will be posted. Part of it will be, I believe it goes to 30, and then as you go out of town, it goes from 35 to 40. We'll keep an eye on that. And, and that council has, we put it in per state recommendations, but council has the authority to change those, to do different speed limits and things like that. So, staff are monitoring, we'll see how it works, and then we'll come back with recommendations. Or if council has a recommendation that they want us to look into, we can do that as well, so. But that's all the loose pieces for that construction part. And I, personally, I think it, it looks very good. The pavement is, is, I think, going to be fine. We, once we get everything done, it's going to be remarkable transformation down there. And I'm, I'm really excited to see the completed project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you again. And then, we are going to do a See, Click, Fix implementation update.
Really quick.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Jensen, the Communications Manager for the City of Muscatine. I'm glad we're having so much fun tonight. It's good to see you all here and having a great time. One of the first things I want to say is that one of our core values is respect. And that means we have open, honest communications. We do that with our staff, we do that with our elected leaders, but most importantly, we want to do that with the citizens who we actually work for. So, in that regards, we have been searching for a tool that will allow greater communication between the citizens and the city via smartphone. That seems to be the technology that everybody's using nowadays. So, we originally had what we called Request Tracker, but it had its limitations in facilitating two-way communication. So, what we've done, we've, we now have an app. It's See, Click, Fix, which you see something, you click on this app, and eventually, we will fix it. This app is, you can find it on, from the Apple Store, from Google Play. You just search for See, Click, Fix, download the app, and then follow the prompts to get to the City of Muscatine. Residents do have high expectations for the level of service that they receive from their community leaders, and so do everyone else, and so do we. I mean, we have those expectations ourselves to be responsive to the needs of our citizens, to the needs of the city. So, See, Click, Fix, which we've also called Muscatine Connect, is our current citizen request management tool that enhances the ability for citizens to report issues. The app will allow you to take a picture of a problem or take a picture of something you may have a question about. Courtesy sidewalks, for, for example, you could have taken a picture of it and posted it on this through the Request Management Tool and ask a question. It has maps, so that you can actually locate where the problem is or the issue is. And it also gives you the ability to do some descriptive work as to what the problem is, how long it's been there. One of the greatest things about this is that if the citizen making this request uses their email to sign up for it, we can start a two-way communication almost instantaneously with them. Our goal is to acknowledge their request within 24 hours. And if we have the ability to fix a problem within five working days, we're going to do that. There again, whether we fix a problem or not, within five business days, we want to satisfy the citizen that we have seen, we have taken into consideration, and we have a plan to address the issue. One of the things that, that takes time to solve is, Brian would probably agree, is potholes. You can't really fix all the potholes that you, that are reported during the winter time. You, you have to dry them out, and you, basically, at this point, you use cold mix to, just to fill in the hole, and then have to come back later in the summer to put hot mix in. So, that's one of those issues where if we just let the people know that, yes, we understand the problem, as soon as the weather breaks, we're going to put a temporary patch on there to, to help that area. This is the way we kind of help satisfy that. This is just a slide that lets you know that you can go to the App Store or Google Play to get the app, but you can also go to the City of Muscatine website. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see... In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see, let's see, button in the upper left there says Musketeen Connect, and all you have to do is click on that, and it, let's see if I got that still. It works. You'll, you'll get to this window, which is where you actually start to submit a request. Now, a lot of communities don't break down these categories the way that we did. I thought it was, be easier for the citizens if I just tried to define the different areas, administration, animal control. We, you can go on down through all these, and you can find one that meets the topic that you want to do. And if it's in the, if it's a fire code enforcement thing, if you just click on it, it comes up with the same type of window that you would see on the app. In this case, the first thing it's asking you is where the location is of this code violation, and I'll put City Hall because we all know we're violating code here. So we're there, and it gives you, you can have this standard overlay map, or you can switch maps and have a more highlighted map. So it just depends on how the person wants to do it. You click on confirm location. You can either add a photo at this time, either from your phone, or if you have it on your laptop, you can add it. You don't have to put a photo in. A lot of times, it's not a bad idea to do that. And next part will come up, it'll say details, so you just type in what's actually going You know, too many cooks in the kitchen. Something like that, so. So you just hit confirm details, and then it's submitted. If you are the submitter and you, you had registered as with your email, you will immediately get an email saying your request has been submitted. Now, on the back end is where we go every day to look and find these requests. And it hasn't popped up yet, so I'll just pick up this other one. This just has to do with trash recycling yard waste and bulky waste inquiry. That's one of the categories that we have. But you see in the upper left, it's probably not that visible, but there is an acknowledged tab, which is what we click to acknowledge that we have received it. That's what we do in the first 24 hours. Then we can go on, and we can do an in-progress, let them know that we are working on the problem, and then at the very end, after we got everything finished up and fixed, we can close it out. The res, the res, the requester will get an email every time. The other benefit is that if, say, Mike Hartman wants more questions answered about this code violation, he can directly email the individual through this system, and as long as it remains public, everybody can see it, so it's not like we're trying to hide anything. So that's another benefit to this. That's a pretty quick overview of this. Do you have any questions? I mean, it's pretty simple to use, and I, I don't see anybody having any problems with it. I'm confident that it's going to go a long way to helping our communication with the citizens. We've had 10 or more problems that we've gone through from start to finish so far in just the less than a month that we've had this going. We're still working through some setup issues with some of the staff that are supposed to be on this end of it, so we're still getting everything situated, but I'm, again, very confident that this is going to be a very good tool for us to use.
So when council, just today, I entered one, a couple, too, from council members, and Dennis sent me something from a resident, and I entered it. He provided a picture, I attached the picture, and I put Dennis's email address in it so he can see and track the progress on the resolution as we go. So that, that's how I will, unless it's a timely thing, I will, I will handle these requests, also because we want to track the workload associated with it as well, and if we need to fine-tune programs or staffing or whatever we need to do, we can do that. I'll provide council a regular report, probably either in my monthly report or on a quarterly basis, of how many calls we had and what categories, how quickly we acknowledged it, and how quickly we reclosed the issue or resolved it. So that'll give council a little bit of information about just how responsive we are as a government.
Just a comment, it works great. I've done a few of these. It works just like you said. About the only question I've got is, you've got a council section, and I, I put one in there thinking at first maybe it was all the ones that from, from council go in there, but then I thought, well, maybe it's for people to make comments about council, didn't like the way the vote went, or something like that.
I can add that one.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, what, what is the intent? I guess is what I'm asking.
That one, I use it, and you're welcome to use it if you have an inquiry for, your inquiries that come to me. Once it gets in the system, I will reassign it to the right department, but it's a, it's a way that allows me to note that it was a council member that inquired.
It started there.
So you'd prefer that if we're entering, we put it into that bucket?
Any, but, I think we can track, we can tag the multiple, but I think, I just want to make sure I, I get councils, you know, in a category, and I get it reassigned, so we just, we're tracking those, yeah.
All right.
And the city council wants to go directly to Carol, so that I thought was the easiest way for you to communicate anything that you might receive from a citizen.
That's why I read it at first, but then after I entered it, it was like, well, what is that really?
It'll take either in that category.
Any other comments? All right.
Have fun and enjoy it.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Hopkins?
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, just something briefly. Monday, just as a reminder, is the day to honor Martin Luther, Dr. Martin Luther King, and it is a day of service. So if you don't have that opportunity to go out and do a service onsite, remember we have a lot of great organizations that need supplies. So whether it's senior resources, MCSA, the Humane Society, Food Pantry, Laundry of Love, who's like my favorite right now, think about them and drop a few supplies off in, in honor. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Freilich?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Nothing, Mayor, thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Osborn?
Nothing tonight.
Cinda?
Nothing tonight.
City Minister Wood? And I am okay, too. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.